Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present for roll call. Commissioner Katz.
Present.
Commissioner Lehrer.
Present.
Commissioner McGraw. Vice President Neiman Brady.
Present.
Three board members, a quorum is present. Madam Vice President.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the February 27th meeting of the Board and Water Power Commissioners. Before I proceed with our agenda, I have some remarks and related requests to this Board's commitment to being more effective, efficient, and accountable as we serve our customers and all Angeli knows. I need you to bear with me because it's a lot. So, and I do not want to hold up the very important and interesting management reports that are coming, but just bear with me because good governance is like oxygen for our collective efforts. It may not always be noticed, but its absence is keenly felt, suffocating the very essence of our progress. So, as a board overseeing LEDWP, it is important that we ensure that we have rules and procedures in place to provide effective and strong governance, that we maintain integrity and responsibility for our decisions, program, and processes, and promote understanding of the policies and operations of the department and transparency for our customers. Continuing to anchor our actions on these values will make us all better and effective in advancing the many programs and initiatives and allow us to stay focused on providing reliable, equitable, and cost-effective water and power safely to the communities that we serve. Toward that end, I have a few topics related to the Board to cover, as well as processes that will demonstrate our commitment and progress towards strong governance. To start with, on the agenda, we have a board vote. Last Friday, the mayor's new appointee to the Board was recommended for confirmation by the City Council Energy Environment Committee and is expected to go before the full council soon, potentially even today. I look forward to welcoming Wilma to the Board and will schedule the election of Board Officers when she is seated with us and all Commissioners are present, hopefully at our next Board meeting on the 12th. Second topic is the review of Board roles and governance and policies and procedures. As mentioned at our last Board meeting, the Department is in the process of soliciting for a consultant to assist the Board in reviewing its rules, processes, and procedures, as well as to help better define the Board's roles versus those from our staff. I also advanced a motion supporting competitively selecting a firm to review our strategic operations and effectiveness consistent with the council motion by council members Yoravlovsky and McCosker. I would like the General Manager and Chief Engineer to provide an update on this item during his General Manager Report today. Committees. As you know, each Commissioner also sits on standing and ad hoc committees of the Board. We have updated, I'm sorry, we have updated the committee assignments and will be posting a document to the Commission website today with those updates. The document contains more information about the purpose and objectives of these committees. We are also in the process of creating two new standing committees, Sustainability and Climate Resilience, as well as Finance, and one more ad hoc committee. The new Sustainability Standing Committee, I'm sorry, the new Standing Committee on Sustainability and Climate Resiliency is being formed to help drive achieving the significant sustainability targets LEDWP and the City of L.A. have committed to, including 100% clean energy and 70% local source water by 2035. These efforts will require sustained, high-level Board and management engagement across water, power, and joint. The Committee will provide oversight of the implementation of these goals, as well as LEDWP's corporate sustainability practices and policies ranging from supply chain to zero waste to biodiversity. The Committee will also ensure the needed collaboration with partner agencies and other organizations. The Committee will be chaired by Commissioner Katz and the Office of Sustainability and Climate Resiliency led by Aaron Gross will be its critical partner. Given the magnitude of the goals I just mentioned earlier, the Board will establish a new standing finance committee, which shall assist the Board on matters relating to financial strategy, rate-making, capital allocation, liquidity position, and the financial policies and activities of LEDWP. I will chair this Committee and meetings will include the General Manager, the Chief Financial Officer, and the Office of Public Accountability, among others. The latest addition will be the Ad Hoc Advisory Committee on Biodiversity, Access to Nature, and Nature-Based Solutions. This Committee will focus on developing an overarching policy to make sure that biodiversity and ecosystem health is integrated into department programs and nature-based solutions are evaluated and improved. Additionally, the Committee will work to ensure that LEDWP is collaborating with the city's biodiversity program towards its biodiversity goals and developing a more comprehensive biodiversity action plan for the Department. The Committee will be chaired by Commissioner Katz. By taking a nature-based approach, integrating biodiversity into the utility's mission and expanding access to nature, there will be opportunities to increase the health and well-being for our customers. These committees are still working on the formation of their charters and purposes and they will be added to the list that will be posted later today, but will be posted in the coming weeks, once those are completed. That said, to get organized around areas of oversight, we will be putting together a coverage list, which will enable our small Board team to ensure that we are actually overseeing all parts of the business and not missing areas, while also not spreading ourselves too thin or duplicating efforts. There are a lot of areas that need oversight beyond committee assignments. Some require the attention of the entire Board, such as safety and DEI efforts, and some are already covered via committees. The list will have an assigned primary and backup Commissioner for each topic. To be clear, this does not mean that the responsibility of the identified area rests only on that lead and backup. All of the Commissioners are responsible for oversight and we should all feel free to learn and ask about all areas. It will merely focus each of the Commissioners' efforts and make sure we aren't taking too much of staff time or overlapping our focus. The Board has come up with the following topics and will welcome suggestions for other areas that we may have missed. The additional areas for focused attention, and in no particular order, are risk management, customer service, labor relations, stormwater, water infrastructure replacement goals, power infrastructure replacement goals, personnel and hiring, feed-in tariffs and other incentive programs, power procurement and utility-owned generation, green hydrogen, supply chain, real estate, rates and green power/green access, compensation, electric transportation, and emergency preparedness. This list is a work in progress and will be updated and shared with executive management and be coordinated by David Rahimi. The next topic is something that I think some people have heard me speak on before, which is the quality of the Board materials and the presentations. To help each of us on the Board provide proper oversight, it is essential that improvements are made to the materials we are provided with, about the agenda items we are voting on. This is not a new issue and it is one I am determined to resolve. It also applies to the presentations that are made to this Board during our meetings. Periodically, we have seen presentations that are thorough and very well-thought-out and Board materials that are excellent. But this level of quality needs to be the rule and not the exception. We cannot make informed decisions without better information. As such, I am requesting that the General Manager and senior staff work more closely with staff in preparing Board letters and presentations to improve their structure, content, and quality. Managers and supervisors must be more accountable for the quality of these materials and ensure they consistently meet a higher standard. Too many presentations are cut-and-pasted text from Board letters that themselves lack sufficient info or are unnecessarily confusing. To provide a little more context for this request, I'd like to share with you more of what I believe we would all benefit with seeing moving forward. First of all, Board letters. Board letters are supposed to be submitted to the Board Office 60 days before a contract vote or decision. While that sounds very early and challenging, we need to start putting discipline around this process and to ensure that the Commissioners can review the materials thoroughly and in a timely manner. I firmly believe that decisions seldom have a good rationale for being rushed. As it pertains to the quality of the Board letters, staff should begin these reports with a clear statement of what you are asking the Board to do. Is it approval, adoption, review, or awareness? Follow with a summary of the situation that you are addressing, along with the program history, a SWOT analysis, how we got here, the timeline, and a justification of its need, and why now? Also, who is submitting it and whether you have support from stakeholders, such as the city attorney, council members, regulators, et cetera? Include the program history and the impetus or the rationale for the program you are implementing or the decision you are requesting. After Board letters comes supplemental presentations. This Board has seen many strong and effective presentations and others that prompt more questions than decisions. I want to emphasize that presentations are not copy-pasted slide versions of the Board letters. Here's the main difference. Board letters are written documents that are meant to convince with details. Board presentations, on the other hand, are audiovisual tools to help the presenter convince with delivery. They can use charts, images, data, and diagrams, but only those that can help explain the case better. Content must be concise and summarized, covering the who, what, why, why now, and the financial implications of the item at hand. This is also your opportunity to make your case, not only to the Board, but to the public tuned into our meetings. It also enables us to highlight staff and to demonstrate the depth of our staff and the personnel behind the projects that are being worked on. Our Board Secretary will run point on working with the Office of the General Manager to make sure these supplemental presentations are thoroughly reviewed and that there is ample time for all parties involved to do that. Furthermore, I am asking the Board staff to work with the Corporate Strategy and Communications Division to set the standards for presentations and put in place a workflow and timeline to review and approve presentations before they make it to the Board. This includes presentation templates, trainings for how to prepare presentations, and a reviewer and approval workflow. Management reports and presentations. Last, but certainly not least, on the topic of Board items. Management reports and presentations need a better process as well. These should typically last 30 minutes or less, which means about 10 slides of content. Any presentation needing more time should seek approval from the Board Secretary. A good example of a topic that would need that is the upcoming budget presentation in the next Board meeting, which will clearly need more than 30 minutes. There are exceptions, but as a rule of thumb, most topics really only need 30 minutes. Further, I ask that all topics for management presentations be provided to the Board Secretary as early as they are known. Our Board Secretary keeps a list of topics that need to be covered and we try to limit these items to two per Board meeting so that we can tackle the rest of the items on the agenda. My goal in asking for these is to ensure that we keep our meetings efficient, effective, and transparent. I welcome continued feedback on ways to improve our efforts and coordination. The next topic around governance is sole-source contracts. I want to take a moment to discuss sole-source contracts. As most and everyone knows, LEDWP does not pursue sole-source solutions. The city charter and laws are consistent with having competitive solicitations, with limited exceptions. And the city's Attorney's Office has confirmed their position on this matter as well. As such, it is the recommendation to all staff to reconsider how procurement is pursued when typically only one provider is believed to have the best solution. As an example, real estate and IT procurement are often constrained in their options, and understandably so. The advice we can provide as a Board is to business units to put together strategies that clearly articulate and address their needs, criteria, and constraints. With the Board's approval of these strategies and the ultimate compliance with them upon selection of a solution, contracts should be able to advance to approve more smoothly and in a timely manner. The Rules of Water and Power Service and Customer Bill of Rights. To improve responsiveness and transparency, I'm asking the GM, together with the Office of Public Accountability, and the CFO, and the city attorney, to review the Rules of Water and Power Service, as well as the Customer's Bill of Rights. Both were last reviewed and updated many, many years ago and are due for a thorough reevaluation and cleanup. I'd like them to come back in one month with recommendations for revisions and updates. Concurrently, the Commissioners and staff will be reviewing the Board rules for updates and edits, and we welcome any and all suggestions. Number eight. There's only 10, bear with me. Ethics Handbook Updates. As many of you have seen last week, the Ethics Commission released a new version of the City Ethics Handbook. As such, I've asked for a presentation to be given at the next Board meeting on the key updates to the Ethics Handbook. Commissioner Travel Form. As part of the Board's function, Commissioners have had to travel on behalf of the Department. This should not be a mystery or a concern to any of our employees or customers and will always be handled in a transparent manner and accounted for properly. Commission staff will work with Commissioners to memorialize what was gained from the travel and will circulate in our new form takeaways and lessons learned to the other Commissioners. Finally, while there are many improvements and policy changes we can initiate and approve here at the Board, there are many others that require outside support, including reviewing and advancing changes to the city charter that are needed to ensure we can effectively meet our objectives and respond to a rapidly changing business landscape and meet our financial obligations. Some areas involve ministerial matters, while others are media, such as our rate structure, time-of-use rates, and equity initiatives. As a first step, earlier this month, LEDWP submitted a response to the City Council motion directing city departments to report with city charter amendment recommendations that would benefit from reform and/or support strategic citywide policies. Our recommendations focus on four administrative changes that would not only improve the internal effectiveness of our organization, but also enable us to more efficiently respond to the needs of city policymakers. I look forward to working with the Department to engage on the media topics in the months ahead. I know the above was a lot. But, all the items I am raising today are intended to promote more effective governance, transparency, and accountability in our work as a Board and as a Department. I appreciate the collaboration and cooperation by the executive management and staff to support this Board's functioning and to promote openness, compliance, and efficacy. Thank you for bearing with me. All right. Moving on, the next topic is to see if there are any additional remarks by my fellow Commissioners.
Only to say that we support and appreciate all of the rigorous and thoughtful amendments and suggestions and recommendations and requests that were in your remarks and we look forward to continuing to drive accountability and transparency for the Board and the organization.
Yes, and I apologize if any of that seemed like it was me, because this is us. And I don't want that to be the case. You have all been very collaborative, including George in his absence.
Forward actions is there. I know it might seem like a lot, but I think it's going to just make it better for everybody, so, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will defer, as mentioned, the election of officers to the next meeting, when hopefully all the Commissioners are present, and turn it to public comment.
Public comment is open at this time. There are no public commenters. Public comment is now closed at this time.
Turn it to Marty.
Thank you very much and you're born to all of you. I have a few items to share, most of the senior staff do most of the sharing, but I will begin with, in response to your question about consultants bringing resources on board to work on the Board items we discussed. We have a selection process this week. Hopefully have somebody on board next week to work on the Board Interaction work. It's a brief consulting contract to look at Board roles, management roles, and how we really make sure that we all understand the roles the best way possible to be the most efficient we can in working between Board and management. Then also, in regards to your motion, we had some internal discussions looking at how the existing IEA survey plays into that as an existing resource, what an accelerated RFP would look like. Joe Malo and I began to talk a little bit about how we'd roll this out. We have some other senior staff that's interested in participating in this work. So that is, we will start to leave the groundwork for what we would scope out to put an RFP out, to assist in that effort. And also, I know Commissioner Lehrer made comments about the timing, which we were trying to do this under. I think we have some different takes on the RFP process, which allows to have a good competitive process, but expedite from what we're used to so we can get that really going and doing very quickly, so.
And just to clarify, is Joe then your ticketed lead?
Joe, because, yes, and being, you know, part of his responsibilities is, you know, strategic planning for the company. So we will be working together on getting this and outlining scope in the work. And I don't expect him to take his hands on himself, but to guide this as the management lead.
Champion.
Right, exactly.
Great, thank you.
Next, I'd like to just briefly talk about some of the storm response. You know, we've had, yesterday notwithstanding, we've had a lot of some significant rainstorms. And the city's become the habit of activating the EOC fairly regularly because realizing that it's the best way for the city to coordinate city operations. And it's the best way to make sure that a storm is not just police and fire acting as emergency responders, but incorporating the work that our own crews are doing, incorporating the work that street services has to do, sanitation does in terms of remediating flooding and that sort of thing. And it's become a very effective tool that Mayor Bass has leaned on to make sure that we're all working in the same direction, that there's increased ability to support each other as city departments and really just to make sure that everyone's on the same page and pulling in the same direction. And it's not that the people are cross-purpose, but a lot of times we can be a lot more efficient by not operating in our normal silos. And so, that's been very effective. I appreciate the work of our folks. We have the folks in the field, particularly in any kind of storm. It doesn't matter even a light rain or just some light wind. Power issues will always be on the uptick and those are folks that are out there 24 hours a day restoring power in tremendous ways and doing very dangerous work. So I really appreciate the work of our field crews. Behind them are a number of folks in the office who support our own operations center, who support going to the EOC and spending their evenings and weekends there, manning phones and making sure that we're part of that activity that the city's put together. So I just want to thank our staff who continues to step up to the challenge we have had since the storm about a year ago where we had a tremendous number of outages and were sort of a one-agency show in the city. There was really no city coordination and we found ourselves dealing with all the problems ourselves. The city stepping up its efforts in any kind of emergency response has been very welcome. It's caused a lot more folks have to put time in, but the results for the community and the city as a whole have been very, very laudable. And I think that the extent of outages and problems is reduced considerably by the coordination amongst all the agencies. And I think that the public appreciates the information flow and the fact that there's consistent messaging during emergencies or kind of storms coming out of the mayor's office so that we don't have every agency doing their own reporting. And that's been a big benefit to everyone as well. So, and so I guess mentioning Joe, it's not only that, even his PR team gave us the highlight in that. That's one that Anselmo mentioned last Board meeting. Evelyn, go ahead.
Thank you, Marty. Good morning, Commissioners. I wanted to start by wishing you all a happy Black History Month. And we do have some good news on the water supply front. Although we have seen a series of winter storm events have been warmer and brought historic rainfall to Southern California Sierra Nevada mountains, we've seen less of a benefit in terms of snowpack. This is resulting in statewide snowpack that is sitting below average right now still. The eastern Sierra snowpack, which feeds our Los Angeles Aqueduct, is 80% of normal to date, which will equate to about 69% of our April 1st normal based on what we forecast. The state water project has been able to take advantage of the storms, increasing storage at both Lake Oroville and San Luis Reservoir. Last week, the Department of Water Resources announced an increase in the state water project allocation for 2024. We are forecasting the allocation now at 15% of requested supplies, up from the 10% initial allocation. This is about 50,000 acre-feet of additional water that is allotted for the Metropolitan Water District, so that will be water that will partially be available to us here in the city. This doesn't include results of any storms that hit California earlier this month, so we'll have to see how the DWR reviews conditions and moves forward with any allocation revisions in the near future. Speaking of storms, we do estimate stormwater capture for the city to be just under 60,000 acre-feet of water since the start of the water year in October. So roughly 70% of that has been in the month of February alone because of the amount of volume that we received here in the city. In terms of precipitation along the aqueduct, we saw so far two big atmospheric river storm systems at the beginning of the month. The first one and followed by a second one that was slightly about half as large. And cumulatively, these two systems have brought the LA Aqueduct system precipitation conditions up from what was tracking to be the worst year on record to being close to our normal range, currently at about 67% of our normal peak snowpack. And so, that's part of the good news here is that we were able to recover a bit from what could have been another, let's just say, the extremes that we're seeing from year to year. It looks like we're more in the normal range now. And to finish the water system update, the announcement that Anselmo brought to you last Board meeting that Marty just mentioned, we're very proud this Thursday to be hosting the 2024 Tap-Off Competition for teams competing from across California at our Silmar West facility in the North Valley. We are very excited that we have our own competitors from the water system and water distribution division competing in the various different events. And two all-female teams coming in from an agency, I believe in Lake Elsinore, that will be competing. It's a very exciting time. We are excited about a future where we can have that be representative of our own crews in the future. So it's going to be accompanied, in addition to the competition, with a safety fair, continuing education credit types of activities, and emergency preparedness information and other activities for staff to partake. And so we're very excited about this event coming up this week. That is the water system update.
Thank you, Evelyn.
Thank you.
We have a lot going on in the DEI front and I'll let Greg highlight that. But first, I want to mention that in conjunction with Black History Month, we had a supplier diversity fair last Thursday evening. That was incredible. fair last Thursday evening. That was incredible. A number of managers there, Aaron and I were there for the evening, Greg and his crew. We had close to 300 companies register. We had, I believe, 16 primes and a number of small companies. It was quite the experience. We had a full house on L-level and A-level of companies, and really trying to educate people how to do business with us, to understand things that we could do to make business more accessible, and also to help create relationships between people who might be subs to the prime contractors as well. So I will let Greg talk about that, as well as a couple of other events. I know he wants to talk about our Lunar New Year Parade, and then other events that we have upcoming. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Greg and let him go through the.
Thank you so much, Marty. And just piggybacking on Marty's comments about the supplier diversity event, which was in celebration of Black History Month by emphasizing black business participation in public contracting, but all minority businesses. We do have a photo montage that's been put together by our comms team, so thank you, Joe, for supporting that. We'll go ahead and roll those slides as I speak. But we have multiple agencies who are participating: airports, LA Metro, Public Works Bureau of Engineering, Public Works Contract Administration, West Basin Municipal Water District, our own Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. Without our own DWP folks, we had Supply Chain Procurement Services, our ERSP Group, Water System, Project Management Office, Power System Major Projects, and our Capital Facilities Groups. Primes, we had Jacobs, Bechtel, AECOM, HDR, WSP, Clark Construction, PCL, Keywit, Webcore Builders, Wilden, and Skanska. We also have NAMAC, the National Association of Minority Contractors, and we had a table of companies representing affordable housing. And all of that representation allowed for our various diverse businesses who were in attendance to network, connect, and see the opportunities, and start the conversation around relationships, to build the opportunities for contracting in the public space. With that, we also had a panel discussion hosted by KBLA Talk Show host Dominique De Prima, which featured Gene Hill of the Greater Los Angeles African-American Chamber of Commerce, and also Ingrid Meriwether of Meriwether &amp; Williams. And that panel discussion focused on the challenges and the opportunities with greater participation by diverse businesses in the public contracting space. And I just want to highlight and say that that conversation was very powerful. It provided a lot of good insights for our smaller businesses to consider, but also for our agencies to consider, and how we can alleviate many of the barriers and burdens that are presented to small businesses for greater participation and inclusivity. So with that being said, we had such tremendous feedback from the folks who I talked with, who my team members also spoke with. They really loved the engagement. And this was developed in partnership with Dakota Communications. Huge success. With that being said, I also just want to take a really quick moment to highlight one item that we shared with the group, which is our general manager signed on to the Equity and Infrastructure Pledge. So this is a pledge that was launched by Phil Washington, former CEO of LA Metro, currently, I believe, CEO of Denver Airport. And it's a multi-agency commitment pledge. Locally here, Stephanie Wiggins from LA Metro signed on. LA County Public Works has signed on. Lawa, Long Beach, Port of Long Beach, Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. And it's really a testament to the.
Are they all public agencies that sign on?
Correct, yes. This is an intentional approach towards public agency support of historically underutilized businesses in the public contracting arena. There was a recent convening of the local cohort at Metropolitan Water Districts of Southern California. AECOM was consulting support for that, as well as, I believe, Harvard was there, and other entities that represents the finance sector. So I didn't want to speak too much about the Equity Infrastructure Pledge, only to say that the leadership of Marty Adams to sign on to that pledge speaks to the intention of LEDWP to advance supplier diversity here at our agency. Thank you so much, Marty, for that.
Thanks, Greg.
I think it deserves a round of applause. Okay, so with that, I'd love to maybe move into our next activity, which was celebration of Lunar New Year and our Chinese New Year Parade. And we have our video highlight reel that was prepared. And while that is being queued up, I will say that our Lunar New Year celebration here at the department was fantastic, and many attendees at a lunchtime event with a panel discussion hosted by our Aspire Employee Resource Group. It was just tremendous. Secondly, we had our first participation in the Golden Dragon Parade. I think our cohort of marchers on the parade route were in the area of about 40 or so employees with families. You'll see all of this in the highlight reel. A picture's worth a thousand words.
A lot of fun.
So I'll stop there. Please queue up the video.
I was yelling over drums, by the way.
It sounds enthusiastic.
The Asian community of employees at the department. It's important for us to feel seen, to come together, to really share that sense of purpose and camaraderie within the department, and to also be a resource for other employees.
It's important for us to be here today to celebrate the diversity of our employees and the communities that we serve.
This is a great opportunity today for us to get involved and celebrate with the community the Golden Dragon Parade in Lunar New Year. Xinian Kuaile to everybody.
I'll just like to give a quick shout out to Mr. Brian Lamb of our Office of Emergency Management, who is a part of a longstanding organization and has been celebrating the tradition of the Golden Dragon Parade for many, many years. With that, we do have one additional video that we'll share when our LEDWP NSB chapter comes up to you. So I'll close my remarks just by highlighting our upcoming events for Women's History Month, which begins this Friday. And so the theme for this year's Women's History Month is Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. And with that, we have several events that are in queue for us, starting with our Women in Trades Summit next week on March 6th, hosted at the JSTI Institute. And so there, we are bringing together many of our women who work in the skill craft, our 300 women, to provide workshops, breakout sessions, keynote speakers, and important conversations around support and leadership and development for our women in the skill crafts. We also are sponsoring the Hispanias Organized for Political Equality. That's HOPE, Latina History Day Conference on March 8. We are also hosting the winter nonprofit organization, Women in Nontraditional Roles, here at LEDWP at our Main Street facilities. And at that location, we will be having discussions, presentations, and more importantly, hands-on experience in a demonstration of construction activities on our Main Street property. We also are planning our Women's Power Walk for March 30th, which is a tentative date, and we're still working towards the location where that Power Walk will be held. And we are also hosting our Women's Career and Wellness Expo, not in March, but in May, on May 4. So those are activities celebrating Women's History Month, and I would imagine we might have a few more added as our Society of Women Engineers brings forth additional opportunities to celebrate.
I'd love to follow up with you as you solidify the walk date, because I can't make the 30th, but, not that you should change it for me, but just want to be in the loop in case I can make whatever you set.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you very much. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that we continue to have our Customer Support Saturdays. I may ask Joe to highlight a little of this, but we do this at some of our service centers, where we offer assistance to customers. We had about 254 customers attend this last, actually, February 10th was the last one. About 206 folks submitted LIWAP applications, which is assistance with their bills from other outside funds. And then, I think, you know, they've been very successful, really helping people with the payment programs, helping them to engage with us, really by putting a focused effort in different communities. Joe, you want to highlight any special things about that?
I just wanted to add that for both LIWAP as well, as for Level Pay and the payment plans, these events have been a great way to really connect with people on the ground in communities. They've been really appreciated. We also met with a large customer who has 100% affordable housing in South LA last time, who really experienced significant financial stress during the pandemic. And they are getting caught up on their bill as well for their residence and for their properties. And the Level Pay program that allows our customers to enroll their debt into that program has been very successful. We actually have $40 million either collected or in Level Pay plans that have been entered into so far.
So thank you. So that's the conclusion of my report. If there's any questions.
No, not at this time.
I have just a comment, sort of a question. I think it's wonderful that we're actually giving opportunities to minority groups and small businesses. And I would just sort of caution us, and when they are hired under a larger organization, sometimes it takes a very long time to collect their, you know.
Payment.
Payment.
Prompt payment is an important concern.
Yes. And I would just say that I don't know what, you know, having had, you know, few firms bring this up to me and other organizations they belong to, Metro does a great job. So find out what they do, because they actually go into the small businesses, and they actually go in and say, you know, quarterly, to make sure that their payments are coming forward. And it's pretty interesting to have, you know, somebody call you from Metro, and just making sure. So I think it's something we could learn more about, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think that's an opportunity for Ann and I to work together. I know we've had presentations to the board on the prompt payment topic, and I think there's some follow-up that we were working towards after that last presentation. We'll continue those efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Cameron, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. Camden Collins, Deputy Executive Director for the Office of Public Accountability. Good morning, everyone. Our office has reviewed and actively is supporting items 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9. I'd like to make a few additional comments about these. Some of these have been in progress for quite a long time and are aligned with positions you've heard from our office about.
Numbers again, I wasn't prepared to.
For simplicity, it's everything but five.
Okay.
Okay. That's easier than enumerating them all. So we've heard from us many times about the staffing shortages and the management pay, several items before you address that issue, and are consistent with our encouragement of modernizing practices and addressing underpay in management. So that's worth noting, is aligned with us. The other two I'd like to comment on, one is the bonds, which is item 02. I think it's interesting to note, our office came into existence after the Great Recession, put so much financial stress on the city and the department. And while there's lots of different ways to measure financial health, this particular decision represents a milestone in DWP regaining financial stability and health at a higher level. So we are fairly excited about your proposing a finance committee. We've noted for several years that the budget isn't really a good place and time to talk about finance, and it does need to be discussed at the board level. And I think that by having it more actively engaged with the board all through the year, that when you reach the budget or a decision like this, you'll find yourselves much more in tune with it, and understanding that this is really a good outcome to be able to go into a year without issuing any new money bonds. So I just wanted to point that out. We're looking forward to participating in the finance committee. The second item worth a little additional comment is the item 04, which is the agreement for land exchange with the Port of LA. We appreciate the department collaborating with us on this. The transaction looks consistent with advice and recommendations we have made and discussed with them since we last talked to the board about this last summer. I would simply note that when you're dealing with the toxics near fuel oil tanks, the latent liabilities are nearly impossible to estimate. No matter how much sampling you do, you can't always be sure. And so, the department has negotiated a transaction we support, but it is good to be aware that any deal that is too good for either side can not stick. So, you know, if the liability were massively mispredicted, then you might see it come back. But I think that even with that risk, this is a transaction we're supporting. And with that, I will respond to any questions about that as needed. Fred is going to come up here as soon as we're done with all the consent items.
You mentioned, you didn't, I don't think anything you said covered item 3. Was there something you wanted to say about item 3?
No, I fully intended to say we support item 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9. So by accepting five only, 3 was there. I may have misspoke on my first attempt, but thank you for clarifying.
All right. Items for approval. So. Trying to focus here. I am calling special. Items 1, 3. Hold on, bear with me one second. I'm sorry, Marty, is 3 and 5 the same team?
3 is.
Are they the same teams, 3 and 5?
Yes.
Different file number.
They're different file numbers, but are they the same teams? They're different file numbers, but are they the same teams representing?
Both of them are the same. They're not the same.
Like, would they be the same people to answer our questions?
Same people answering, yes. Same people, I'm sorry. Same exact same, same people, yes. Sorry about that.
So then we'll just hold 3.
Thank you.
4 and 7. But these aren't hold, they're just called for special. So that leaves 2, 5, 6, 8, and 9. Okay. And to be clear, you're holding 3 or calling special 3? I'm calling, all of the ones I mentioned, I'm calling special. So let me restart, because I was confusing. Calling special 1, 3, 4, and 7. Okay. Great. Motion to approve 2, 5, 6, 8, and 9. Second?
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Three ayes, motion adopted.
Next, we're moving to management reports. And very excitedly, looking forward to the presentation from the National Society of Black Engineers.
I'd like to just maybe provide a really quick introduction to my really dear friends and colleagues. Our president of the local NSB chapter, Katina Thomas, project manager and our Water Engineering and Technical Services Division, and our vice president of the organization, Laverne Brazil, who works in my office, in the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And I just must say that the organization launched in 2020 and has grown tremendously since that time, and continues to raise the bar year after year with each generation of leadership. And this leadership is no exception. So with that, they had a really fabulous event hosted here in the building on Saturday, our Youth Day at LADWP. And if I may, I'd like to have the video of that queued up so that we can see the highlights from that event that was organized and conducted by these two fine leaders and a complement of other team members, including Katina's husband, Kevin Thomas, who also works in water engineering and technical services. So please, if we can have that video highlighted, and I'd like to say just a few more remarks about that.
Just to be clear, you're Katina and you're Laverne?
No.
Oh, the other way around? Okay.
The LADWP National Society of Black Engineers welcomed over 100 middle and high schoolers to Youth Day at LADWP, where young minds can discover the fascinating world of the various science, technology, engineering, and math careers.
It's so important to have a day like a Youth Day, because as people that get inspired by other people to get to where we are as engineers, we have to look at the next generation. We have to inspire them, and so they can see people that look like them, that speak like them, so they can say that if they can do it, I can do it too.
The day was filled with hands-on activities, insightful displays, opportunities to interact with professionals in the field, as well as a special screening of the documentary, The Space Race.
Many of the things that seemed impossible now will become reality tomorrow.
So we're showing the movie called Space Race, and it chronicles the aerospace industry and African-Americans who have tried to become astronauts, and ultimately it brings it full circle, showing you people like May Jemison and other African-American astronauts who have been able to make it through the problem. So for Black History Month, we are here sharing that with the students to let them know that they too can be astronauts, they can be engineers, they can be anything they want to be in science, technology, engineering, and math.
I'm going to applaud that.
Yeah, please.
And I have to give a shout out to Joe and his team and the audiovisual team for putting all of these great video and images together for today's board meeting. As you can see from that particular highlight, we had children, students here learning and being inspired for STEM careers, and they came from diverse communities of San Fernando Valley, South Los Angeles, the harbor, as well as East Los Angeles. We had representation from our water system and various groups, including our Operation Next team, our Planning Section, our Project Management Construction Management Groups, Water Distribution, Power Transmission and Distribution have the downed power line simulation display there. Our Power System Major Projects and Power New Business had representation, Fiber Optics Enterprise Group, and Raytheon was there. So very diverse presentations for our kids to really become inspired. They had a guest speaker, Chauncey Spencer II, curator of the African-American Aviation Museum. He had a display featuring exhibits from the Tuskegee Airmen and the history of African-American astronauts throughout the history of NASA. They also had Jay Rodriguez, retired naval pilot, who currently serves as a pilot for Delta Airlines and also a pilot for the Naval Reserves. And they spoke both to the group in the introductory program as well as after the film exhibit of The Space Race. So with that said, wonderful impactful event hosted by NSB. So I'll turn it over to my really good friend Katina Thomas to take the presentation forward.
Thank you so much, Greg. Good morning, commissioners and executive managers. My name is Katina Thomas, and I am the president for the LADWP National Society of Black Engineers Professionals Chapter. And presenting with me today is our vice president, Laverne Brazil. It is with great pleasure that we present to you our fourth annual report for fiscal year 2023-2024. In our presentation, we will provide an overview of important topics such as our core goals, our membership demographics, engineering hiring data, professional development, and programming events. Next slide. Oh, sorry, that's me. Shown on this slide is our executive board, which some are in the audience with us today. I'd like to acknowledge the executive board and members, so if you can please stand when I call your name. Angela Taylor is our secretary, and she works in the joint system. Patrice King is our parliamentarian, and she works in the water system. And Michael Simpson is our delegate number two, and he works in the water system. And for all the other members that we have here present. Oh. So we have a special guest. We have my husband, Kevin Thomas. He tried to trick me and say he wasn't coming. He is our first delegate, and he works in the water system as well. And for all other members, please stand. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Not shown on the slide today, and I'm so sorry, is our president emeritus, Inwahal Lumumba. Please stand.
They know me already.
Now, if we can have all members, please stand. First, I'd like to start by telling you how grateful I am to work with such an outstanding executive board. While our executive board and membership continue to benefit from the opportunities to serve, it's worth noting that the department also benefits, as it stands for excellent diversity and inclusion. Together, we've been able to accomplish several key initiatives of our organization's core goals. Through our efforts and the department's support, we've been able to produce quality programs and impactful events that we are so proud of, not only for the department, but for the Los Angeles community as a whole. The chapter's leadership roles provides opportunity for employees to shine and showcase their impressive skills, experience, and ultimately become the leaders for LADWP. NSB is a national organization comprised of collegiate and professional members. The mission of National Society of Black Engineers is to increase the number of culturally responsible black engineers who excel academically, succeed professionally, and positively impact the community. And with that, the LA Department of Water and Power, National Society of Black Engineers Professional Chapter, has formed our own mission statement. And that is to foster diversity and inclusion in the field of engineering, provide professional development opportunities for its members, and contribute to the advancement of STEM initiatives within the community. We aim to empower and support black engineers, creating a collaborative environment that promotes excellence, innovation, and social impact.
Good morning. I'm Laverne Brazil, and I'm just going to go over some of our LADWP/NSB core goals, and the first of which is community and STEM. We would like to promote engineering and STEM-related careers for pre-collegiate and collegiate students. Recruitment, we are recruiting at LA-area colleges, historically black colleges and universities, conferences, and the National Society of Black Engineers' national conventions. Also, we do participate in National Society of Black Engineer regional conventions as well. And unity, the theme of this year's National Society of Black Engineers 50th Annual Convention is engineering community, and with unity being a key word in that theme. And we do that by building and supporting membership and providing professional development seminars. A little bit about our members, we are proud to have 141 members currently. We did have a membership drive back in August, which yielded quite a few new members, and we're happy that our membership is diverse across the department. 35% of our members are from the joint system, 35% of our members from power system, 29% of our members from water system, and we even have two members from IBW. So we're very thankful for our union members. We're also.
How many members do you think you should have?
I think everyone. I think everyone should be a member. I am not an engineer, and somehow, by the point system, I am vice president, meaning they point it to me, and so you are now vice president. But I think that, as you'll see in our membership demographics later, that all of our members are diverse, so not everyone works in a STEM career at the department, not everyone is black. And so we welcome everyone. Here in NSB, LADWP/NSB, our membership breakdown is 93 African-American engineers. We have currently eight Asian-American engineers, two Filipino designated, this is how our members would prefer to be designated, 18 Latino or Hispanic engineers, 18 Caucasian engineers, and other two. Also, we just want to point out that of our engineering membership, or of our membership, the ones that are, their profession is in the STEM community, is 50 African-Americans, seven Asian-Americans, one Filipino, 11 Latino or Hispanic, 15 Caucasian, and two other, which means that of those numbers, our membership is also made up of administrative staff, of support staff, of some of our field staff. And so we're really proud of the diversity of our members.
So on this slide, you'll see the chart, and it's reflecting the engineers hired by ethnicity. Now, we have African-American engineers in comparison to all new engineers hired, and it's sorted out by male and female. So we have a total of 141 engineers that was hired in 2023. 31 were female, and out of the 31, three were African-American descent. We need to close the gap on hiring African-Americans with respect to all new hires. We need to focus more resources in hiring African-American women. As you can see, we have so much work to do. Here on this slide, you're going to see the 2022 hiring data versus the 2023 hiring data. And this chart shows the numbers of hires across all systems. So in 2022, Water System hired one African-American female engineer, and no African-American female engineers in power or water, or joint. In 2023, all three systems did hire one African-American female, which shows some progress, but there's still work to be done. As you can see, it's going to take the full support of the Honorable Board, DWP Executive Management, DEI Office, and the DWP Systems to make progress for this current year and future years to increase hiring. This can be remedied with policy and process improvements to our hiring processes. Last year, our chapter started working with the Human Resources Department and DEI Office to remove as many roadblocks in the process as we can. If we want to be industry leaders of the future, then we need to bring our policies and practices into today's modern era, like other industry leaders. Otherwise, we will continue to see this disparity and lose out on the high-value engineers and STEM candidates that can lead this department and aid in solving the great industry, excuse me, I'm sorry, challenges that we may face. Just remember that the engineering students of today will ultimately be the professional engineers of the future, and we want them here.
Before you move to the next slide, just, can I pause for one second to make one comment and then a question for you? This is not acceptable, you know, results. And it's interesting, I would imagine, that if you layered on top our local demographics, that this is not a consistent ratio. And that means that we're not, as an employee base, fully representing the community too. So it strikes me as we could be doing more in our community. It doesn't necessarily mean there are representative number of black engineers in the community, but just as an overall effort, what do you think else can be done by the board to help support your efforts? Or the collective efforts, really? It's not your efforts, our efforts.
I think, do you mind? Okay. I definitely think that broad support of recruitment efforts, sometimes we find that we have either the same number of volunteers, or it's not a diverse number of volunteers. And that can be, I'm going to speak really frankly, that's because of policies in the department that allow for each system or division to make their own rules. So there is a base level of rules that are established by travel in the city and by the department. And then there are rules that are imposed upon over those base, based on the system that someone might be working in. Because of that, they vary from system to system, meaning we might have a volunteer who can come from the water system, and they might be asked to do three or four events because their system is understanding, I'm just throwing out a system, not calling anybody out. One system who can, they might be able to do three or four events because their system is very supportive of it, or their leadership is very supportive of it. Whereas, we might have a system where someone wants to volunteer, and it's, the scrutiny, the relevance is questioned, the frequency is questioned, you know, why are you going? You went somewhere last year. We need people at recruitment events who look like, sound like, come from the places where we are recruiting. And in order to do that, we need to allow our staff, especially those who have experience, who have come up through, for us, it's NSB, and other recruitment efforts aimed towards African-Americans, but they need to be able to get out there and recruit. We also just need to have something that we can't affect, unfortunately, which is some changes in how long it takes us to hire an engineer. When we go out. When we go out to hire a 22-year-old, they don't want to wait six months. And unfortunately, that's not something that the department or the board can control. It's a larger problem, but it's something that I just got back from a conference in Baltimore, and I'm talking to these students, and you know, they're just like, okay, well, there are companies doing interviews right there on the spot, and they're able to offer them a job. And while we hope to have plenty of those opportunities available at the NESB National Convention, we did not have any of those opportunities available at this past convention. And so those students say, thank you very much, and then they keep walking because they're going to graduate in May. They want to have a job, and unfortunately, we can't give them one or the promise of one in a timely manner. That's just a couple of--
I think Laverne has covered it all. I was just going to add, what she covered is if we can have conditional job offers at these conferences and conventions and not have to wait, you know, to schedule a WebEx. Like she said, there's job, there's interviews occurring at these conferences and conventions.
Okay, Marty, I don't know what the process is for hiring. I know we have, I don't know all the details. I know we have a lot of limitations. Clearly, you're well aware of those limitations. I know we have some flexibility to expedite. To the extent you can explore that, that would be, I think, a good takeaway. But additionally, it sounds like we may have inconsistencies on the applications of enabling employees throughout the organization to support various chapters. There probably should be some universal defined policy around that. So I'd appreciate you looking into what can be done around that.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is very informative and helpful, and I also just wanted to give a shout out to the amazing community work and the video that you showed earlier. I think reaching out to K-12 is so important, and that engagement in STEM really has to start early if we're going to have a larger population of engineers to draw from. So it seemed like the speakers and examples that you gave were really inspiring, I'm sure, to these kids, and representation really matters, and it helps them see, you know, where they can grow to. So thank you so much for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. We agree. I'm just going to embarrass Katina for one moment and say that two young women requested that she mentor them from that Saturday event. It was really quite amazing. I'm going to move on to a little bit of a lighter subject.
Yes, here we go. So we're going to just highlight some of our--
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Lay.
I come from an allied profession that is becoming extremely relevant, landscape architecture. So I would like to advocate for that, and we do have, there is a company called ASRI that, you know, basically is a California company that is someone that we should reach out to. I can make a contact. But the same thing goes for architects, and we do do architecture projects. So I, and I think they would, they would want to be a part of such a well-run organization. So I want to advocate for both L.A. Trade Tech, of course, and then Woodbury University. Just two, you know, they're like within miles of here. It doesn't mean that there aren't other schools, but both architects, planners, landscape architects, and, you know, just so that you sort of allow for a little bit of, since you're already allowing for flexibility, might as well go the distance and see what other young people in high school you can inspire. And, yeah.
Okay. What was the second school you had mentioned?
Los Angeles Trade Tech, which is a college, a community college, right? And then, right?
That's right.
And then Woodbury.
Thank you, Commissioner Lay. Thank you. All righty, so I'm just going to highlight a few of our events. We had a joint event. I'll kind of breeze through these a little bit. We had a joint event with our SHIP and SWE and ASPIRE, actually, SHIP, SWE, ASPIRE, and Pride. We did a Christmas treats down on the lobby level. That was an excellent joint event. We also did a STEM Day where our own in Ojai, La Mumba, our president emeritus, went down to Centennial High School in Compton and just shared with those students there some opportunities for the STEM careers and careers available at LADWP. On Board Rezo Day, LADWP NESB held a craft table where our children of the families of employees, or actually, and some adults, came and made Christmas ornaments. That's one of our just internal efforts. We also had a few hot professional development opportunities as well. Back in January, and actually, in November and then January, we did two tours of the L.A. sanitation--
Hyperion Treatment Plant.
Hyperion Treatment Plant, and they were successful. Employees were able to volunteer and go on a tour to learn more about our partners in L.A. SAN and what they're doing with water and purple piping and the new airport project, so that was very informative. As far as personal development, we also had a presentation back in July from Investors Playbook. They're a company, a black-owned investment company, who really gave a presentation about managing your funds and personal finances, retirement, and investing. So that was for personal development for our members. And also, we had a presentation forum, Corey Kirkendall, who owns an IT company in Texas, and he did a presentation on ChatGPT and AI and the influence of AI on the future. And it was very eye-opening. A lot of our members, and actually, non-members, learned a lot about how to use ChatGPT and the benefits of leveraging that and other AI tools for personal development. And then we just want to really highlight, this is a kind of milestone for us. If you can see, in 2022, we've participated in the Kingdom Day Parade for three years in a row. If you can see, in 2022, we had a small group, and in 2023, slightly larger. And in 2024, our group of participants in this parade has grown. Definitely Greg and Evelyn have been present in all of our parades, but we specifically want to thank our general manager, Marty Adams, who has, in each one of these cases, thrown on his tennis shoes and a T-shirt and marched with us. And this past year, we were especially excited that Aram and Commissioner-- I'm sorry, do I have to call you Mr. Benjamin? That Aram and Commissioner Lay joined us, and we were really, really excited for the new additions. We hope that you guys make it an annual thing. It's a great event. The community is very welcoming of DWP, and we had a lot of good fun. It seems the sun seems, the sun always follows us on that day, so we're very grateful.
And it turns out that Aram is a good soccer player.
Yeah. Aram did play soccer in the street with a couple of kids.
And so this is our Black History event. Greg, he pretty much, you know, covered everything. We had the video to show everyone. And I mean, I've heard really rave reviews, you know, from management and others and that how it was such a big, huge success, and I must say so myself. It really touched us to have over 100 attendees for our first annual Youth Day at LADWP. And so we will continue to have this done because it was so effective. Just talking, one young lady, she won a gift card, and Laverne had asked her, well, what did you learn today? And, or what opened your eyes? And she said, I learned about fiber optics. That was an interest for her. But that is what we want. If they can just take away just something, you know, and walk away and be inspired to continue, then we've done our jobs.
Yes. Okay, so apologies for the first event on this slide. When we were making it, we didn't quite realize that after. So upcoming event is our Black History Event for Youth Day. It happened on Saturday. But upcoming is the 50th Annual National Convention for the National Society of Black Engineers. It is a huge event. It's going to take place in Atlanta, Georgia. And as I mentioned before, it would be really beneficial, I think, if we were to be able to go to that convention with some same-day conditional job offers, to be able to recruit and hire some students. When I was talking to students last month in, or last week in Baltimore, I asked them, you know, what do you, what do you think about relocating? And they're more than willing. DWP has a competitive starting salary. We advertise things like work-life balance, our wonderful benefits, our amazing union, so that when they look at a job that maybe pays, our DWP starting salary for an engineering associate is $100,200. And when they look at that starting salary compared to maybe some of the big guys like Northrop or Raytheon or Boeing, and their starting salaries may be a little bit more, I always counter that with count your hours, because at DWP, you work. You get paid for every hour you work. And so some of those students might be looking at $125,000 and thinking, that means more to me. And then when I tell them, count your hours, if you're going to be working for 60 hours, you might as well be working at DWP. And it's a great place to start, learn, and stay. So I really hope that we can have some success recruiting students and engineers at that event.
Particularly, given the current just climate, hiring climate, I think you may be the bells of the ball there too, because people have pulled back on hiring, but we obviously have quite a few hiring needs.
I agree. The only challenge is getting our name out there. We're a utility in Los Angeles. And when Boeing shows up with a space that's three times as large as ours, we kind of just try and get near them. So, you know, we don't try and match them, but we get near them so that when people are kind of milling around or they're waiting for 15 minutes, they can come over and talk to us and go back over there. So we've got a few strategies up our sleeve. I try and poach some people. On April 20th, we're having our Earth Day Community Service. We're doing a beach cleanup. It's probably going to be at Dock Waller Beach. We'll have those details finalized and sent out to our membership. In May, we're just adding another professional development event. So we have done what we call Health, Self, and Wealth. And so we are doing a self-development event, and that'll be centered around health and personal care. June 18th is our Juneteenth celebration. As always, we have, and we're grateful to the department and DEI for supporting those efforts. And then in July, we will announce our new executive board.
Does the April 20th event conflict with-- Isn't that also--
No, Chatsworth is the following week, the 27th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next, we'd like to give a special thank you to Winifred Yancey, who was our senior advisor for our NESB chapter. I know she's not here, but I'm sure in spirit, and Laverne talks to her often, probably every day. You know, we just wanted to say we appreciate her support and just dedication and just helping NESB, you know, thrive and provide good advice and guidance.
So she retired, but we miss her. And of course, another retiree or soon-to-be-retiree. This was supposed to be tomorrow, but postponed indefinitely. But thank you, Marty. Marty's just been a real, a huge supporter of LADWP NESB since our inaugural days, and we just were really, really grateful, Marty. You have, your event is pushed back, so we would like to recognize you more formally at that event. But we couldn't let this pass without saying that, as we mentioned, Marty has been at a lot of our events, and we really appreciate the support, especially from the general manager. It means a lot.
And lastly, we would like to thank our chapter members, the commissioners, our Marty. We would like to thank you. And Marty can dance. I just wanted to add that, you know, we have music walking when we're on the parade. And, I mean, it's a great time to come out and be able to talk to your general manager. And it's just so natural. So anyway, let me continue. Want to thank Aram for your support, all our senior AGMs, and--
And I get to thank the people who make this everything run, from recruitment services to corporate communications and media relations, all of facility services, repographics, the print shop, Cars. We reserve, sorry?
What's Cars?
Cars is the parking office. But they also the, they also do all of the room reservations in JFB. And without room reservations and the print shop and repographics making our posters, the print shop making our flyers, facility services bringing us extra trash cans or moving things around, you know, tables and whatever we need, corporate communications, all of our videos and our public-facing media, recruitment services, absolutely. We would like to thank them, and they're a portion, a part of DEI. And so we just wanted to say, we couldn't do this without them specifically, and so we really, really appreciate their help.
And that will conclude our presentation, and here is our chapter photo.
Thank you for the very meaningful. I also have to say, your pins are very striking, too.
Oh, thank you. This is the National Torch, so this is the NESB National Torch.
Excellent, yeah.
All members get one.
Yes.
It's an extra incentive to join.
Yeah, one last note, just thank you very much. Incredible work. I did also just want to especially call out, I was really glad to see the L.A. sanitation tour. You know, this board is definitely trying to promote and encourage greater collaboration between LADWP and other city agencies, so I was really glad to see that, as well as all the other amazing work. So thank you.
Thank you.
So our next presentation will be an update on our, from our Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs, Mr. Paul Habib, who's taken over the role. Matt Hale, who, remember, was brought in following Nancy's departure to City Hall. And so now Matt's back at City Hall himself. So I have a City Hall escapee who works for me, Paul Habib, who's well-versed in this area and has happily taken the reins. This is something that we have not done in recent history that I can recall in terms of briefing the board on legislative efforts and things that I think are of interest to the department as a whole. And so this will be the first of what we hope becomes a regular briefing so the board is aware of the efforts going on and issues that we're facing and dealing with. Paul, take it over.
Thank you. Yes, so my name is Paul Habib. I'm the interim director of Legislative and Intergovernmental Affairs, or we call it LIGA. And I'm very happy to be here today on behalf of all of our staff who are tirelessly to advocate on key issues at every level of government, federal, state, and local, on behalf of the department, of course, our ratepayers. So today, I'm going to give a little bit of an overview of what we do and what we've done in the past year, and a little look forward to 2024. We have a small team, but a mighty team. I view us as the diplomats of the department. We work to build relationships on behalf of the department so that we can work together, identify potential issues before they jeopardize our goals, look for opportunities to help further our objectives, and interact with officials on all levels. And so we have a legislative side of the team, which we'll focus on today, but we also have a group of folks within our team that work directly with our officials, specifically all our council members, as well as, you know, any elected that has boundaries within our service area. You know, recently, with the heavy storms, we had staff that extended their hours, worked overtime, worked weekends to make sure that we were updating our local folks on projects, power outages and restorations, working closely with Joe's team at Community Affairs. Appreciate all the help there. So we have a very dedicated team. And the work I'm going to present is the stuff that they've done. Since it is a small team, I think it's appropriate that I acknowledge them. So this work that I'm presenting today is on behalf of Genova-- sorry, Genova Williams, Isaiah Smith, Anthony Maxi, Thomas Martinez, Kerry McCorkle, Leilani Johnson, John Gregory, Alexander Peseño, Ty Washington, and Tamika Ford. Small group that punches way above our weight class, I believe. And so in 2023, we had a number of key victories. We partner with federal consultants that are in our shop that help us try to identify opportunities, especially within grant opportunities for both water and power systems and joint, and we collaborate directly with, you know, all the folks internally so that we can then have an external message and approach. And we were successful in a couple of areas. One, we joined with the governor's office in our-- One, we joined with the governor's office and our state partners and key staff internally like Nermina Richard-John Neil, Michael DePaolo, John Levy, Jesse Prasman, many people, to put in an application on behalf of the state of California under the Arches banner to go after over $1 billion in federal grant funding to help launch a regional hydrogen economy. And in October of 2023, the federal government announced seven national hydrogen hubs, along with Texas. California received the most funding, $1.2 billion, to go to launch this effort. It is going to be a key focus here in Southern California, the metropolitan LA region, kind of a hub within a hub when you look at the Port of LA, you look at the power system, you look at transportation, you look at LAX. So we're very excited that this is going to really help in our efforts to decarbonize and reduce the impact on our ratepayers. We know that Scattergood Modernization Project is part of the Arches hub. They are still negotiating, the state and the DOE, on how much money each project's going to get, but we're expecting millions of dollars to come towards offsetting that.
Can you clarify there? You're saying the state is negotiating with the DOE on how much money Scattergood will get?
All the projects. They have identified like 39 projects out of this $1.2 billion, who gets what. They've been negotiating since October. We keep telling, they keep telling us every two months, it's going to be right around the corner. I'm hopeful by April, we'll know exactly how much, but we're expecting millions of dollars towards Scattergood.
And the reason why I'm pressing on this is that the figure that I had heard that, and I think Scattergood is a linchpin of a lot of the activities, was roughly $130 million. Is that, when you say the state, who is representing LADWP in the state's efforts?
So actually, we are, Arches is the key entity. They are forming a board, and my understanding is that the mayor's office, deputy mayor Nancy Sutley, will be on that board. In the meantime, they have a power working group, which Marty Adams chairs and I assist on. And so we've been in constant dialogue with the governor's office and the executive team of Arches right now to advocate on behalf of Scattergood and provide all the information they need. So we're in regular contact, but hopefully the board will be set up soon, and the mayor's office will have a direct role in that.
Okay. And I think Marty shares my enthusiasm for hydrogen being a very important factor in our ability to get to clean energy, 100% clean energy.
Well, I think because of the leadership of this department and this commission to push hydrogen when it wasn't cool, we were in a very good position to go after this money and be successful. And I expect Scattergood will get a significant amount of money because we are shovel-ready. We are in REIR right now, and a lot of folks are just talking about it, where we're already, you know, IPP is in the ground.
Yeah, exactly. I was going to say, we have to mention a lot of the work the department and Aram and others have been doing with IPP. Because both, that one-two punch, we're doing it.
Yeah, we were very well positioned because of the forethought that our executive management and the board had already. And IPP was gold for us to say that it's not, that we're going to be operating in 2025. You know, we already have a pilot program.
And the geographic location within us, Port of LA, Port of Long Beach, as major off-takers, was recognized in the Arches application. And one of the things that the federal government recognizes, we actually have a hydrogen hub that can deliver hydrogen and use it. And I mean, we put projects together through this program, through Paul's leadership, that actually create the hydrogen economy to move, to move everything forward. So it's a fortunate and unique setup that we're right in the middle of.
So our hope is by April, we'll know exactly how much we're getting, but we are for sure one of the projects. And so my next update, hopefully it'll be good news, and we have a real number to go with it. I think it's closer to what you said.
Hopefully it exceeds it.
I, yeah, keep my fingers crossed. The other thing that we've worked on federally with our consultants and with the local staff like Ash Saidi and David Castro, is we went after other pools of money on the federal side. And so, and I know this board has already heard, but Grid Resiliency and Innovation Program called GRIP, we went after $48 million. And why that's significant is it requires a one-to-one match. So when we match it, it's almost $100 million, and it's specific to underserved communities. So we're one of only 34 who got this funding. And it goes to trying to enhance distributed energy resources. So we're talking about EV chargers, we're talking about solar panels fit in areas that don't often, aren't affluent enough to access some of this stuff. And so this money should go a long way to trying to bring some equity to our grid resiliency efforts. And so that's exciting. What's also exciting is that was year one of what should be a five-year annual grant program. So we actually worked with our folks again just recently to do a notice of intent that we plan on going after more of these grants this year. And they'll, they'll give us some feedback on which ones look like our best opportunities, and we'll follow up and go after even more money. You know, the mayor's office has worked with us as well on this, and we don't want to leave any money on the table, right? We want to really go after all we can. So that's another thing we do in conjunction with our federal folks. Statewide, last year, we had some successes, some that had been in the works for a long time. As you know, we have some of the most aggressive climate goals in the country, both in water and power, to try and meet goals for 2035. And one of the significant barriers to meeting some of our completion of large water projects or transitioning to our carbon-free projects in the power sector has been the lengthy review process and court challenges in the environmental review process. And so we've been working for quite a while. We support a good, strong CEQA. We know it's important. At the same time, we have a number of projects, we have potentially 34 transmission projects that would be needed to get us to LA 100 goals. We have water projects, and we don't want to be having each project tied up in court for years. So what the legislature did in this past year, they didn't weaken security or the rigor of environmental review, but they put a shot clock on legislative action. So if it's challenged in court, a decision has to be rendered within 270 days. So we now know at the get-go, we can, we can look ahead and figure out how long projects will take and not, you know, say, well, it could be, you know, tied up for three or four years. We know a maximum it'll be reviewed and completed under a year, one to get on that backend on the review side. So that can help us kind of create our timelines and our targets in a more effective manner. And we appreciate the governor and the state legislature for recognizing that. You know, we support the CEQA process, it's important, but we also need to have, you know, firm timelines. And so that was something that, you know, our Environmental Affairs, Catherine Rubin, Louis Ting, had been advocating for many years, and it was good to see that come to fruition this past year. Another thing that's been important, you know, LADWP, as well as the San Francisco PUC spearheaded a campaign to extend the California Water and Wastewater Aриage Program, Payment Program. We call it CWAP, it's a lot easier to say. And this happened during the pandemic where funds were made available because so many thousands of utility customers fell behind and weren't able to make it. So funds were made available. Leilani Johnson from our staff has been on this for years, going to advocate, how can we get these funds? So we partnered with the Department of Sanitation over at Public Works. And in 2022, we were able to bring over $128 million that helps utility relief for the citizens of LA. And then we realized that there was still money on the table, not all of it had been spent, and it was going to go back. And so we advocated to the governor's office, state legislature, to kind of do a second round. And in July of 2023, the governor just did just that with a trailer bill. And so we then went after this additional extension of funding and were able to secure $143 million last year combined with sanitation. So over the last three years, that's over a quarter billion dollars of debt relief for our customers. And you know how difficult we are because we're constrained in certain ways, so it's really nice to be able to have that funding there. And that, again, is, you know, a testament to the collaboration of our team and our departments here.
But because that is only limited to the time period of the incurred arrears for the COVID period, so I just want to be, not only.
Right. The last application period with this money ran, I believe, to the end of January. They had two months to kind of apply for, you know, for the past. So moving forward, that wouldn't be available, but we made sure that we didn't let any of that funding go to waste, and we got as much as we could for LA. But yeah, we, in next year, we would, that money's not available, and, you know, it doesn't look like the state budget's going to have additional funds. So that's on the state thing. Locally, there's also some issues, both last year and this year, that we're on top of. The Scattergood Modernization Project was unanimously approved last year by city council. And it's important to our, moving forward, as we talked about in hydrogen. When it was required, the city council also had a number of valid questions that they asked to be addressed during the EIR CEQA process. We expect the draft EIR to be released this year, and then this item will be back in committee and council to review those questions and answers. So this will have, I'm sure, a pretty robust discussion when it goes through, as it goes through the processes for review and final approval. So we're very appreciative that it's been given the go-ahead. And then this year is important for us to address some of those lingering questions that need to be answered to support it all the way. Additionally, our energy and environment community has been really water-focused. You know, we, they've asked us to look for regional solutions to maximize all of our water supplies, and they've asked us to work together with MWD and LA County and sanitation on how we do that and look for regional solutions. This is the right type of approach. We used to get half of our water from groundwater, and so part of this is how do we do that moving forward? How do we restore those, restore those? A lot of the stuff that we're doing in Operation Next, how do we do that, not in a silo, but in collaboration? They've been meeting regularly at ENE, the general managers, Martin, just this last Friday, Marty was there, along with Adele from MWD and Barbara Romero from Sanitation, talking about how we move forward together. And so we support this, and, you know, our team will continue to make sure that we are connecting these folks and that we're ready to present whenever they're asked to. We're working closely with Mayor Bass and Councilwoman Yerslawski and the whole council to make sure this regional cooperation happens. So that's some of the things that we're monitoring locally that will be ongoing.
And how, how would the project seek federal funding? I know that there's the Water Resources Development Act, and that, that has, I mean, I actually don't know a lot of the details about that, but also there's the large-scale water recycling program. Does, does the, our water recycling efforts have eligibility for our funding from either of those federal programs?
Well, you know, what's interesting is step one is trying to figure out who, what roles and responsibilities are for each area and then figure out how to move forward. So we've been asked to ultimately come up with an MOU, working together, and I think some of those questions on who moves forward and asks for funding will come out of the MOU. But step one is, you know, sanitation has their recycling program, we have our programs. The mayor's office has actually brought in someone to work collaboratively, collaboratively amongst these different areas, trying to figure out where the best fit is. Everyone, you know, has their own thoughts on whose water it is and how it should be used, and part of this has to, you know, come up with a regional approach to it. So you're right, asking the right question. They don't have the answer to that now. I think that's going to be kind of one of the next upcoming steps. Once we know who's responsible for what, then it's who goes after what funding.
So one of the committees that will be updated on the posting later today is the representation on the advisor, Ad Hoc Advisory Committee on DWP and Public Works. And that'll be chaired by Commissioner McGraw, as well as we're adding an additional commissioner. So Commissioner Katz will be joining, too, with the hope that Public Works has additional Public Works members as well. Because I think this collaboration is critical for the advancement of Operation Next and Measure W Stormwater Capture Projects. But in specific, I would urge everyone participating to not miss the opportunity to apply for financing because we don't know who the entity is.
And if I could just add to that, so on the Tillman Project, there's some WIFIA funding that sanitation has. But interestingly, we also were looking at some state revolving fund money. But when we got together and looked at it, and determined it's actually cheaper for us to fund it ourselves, based on the rules and the timing. So we are looking at funds that are available, but also, a lot of times, the rules surrounding those funds are onerous, particularly as to who's going to carry the debt. And sometimes the timing, because where you can or can't bank funds, it makes more sense for us to react in a timely fashion with the, with the funding as the project goes forward. So we absolutely want to not miss any money, but at the same time, make sure that, collectively as a group, because we found this out with sanitation, working together, collectively we made a good decision that cost everybody less money, saved our ratepayers tens of millions of dollars by that decision.
While we're still on the local side, first of all, very much looking forward to digging in on the collaboration between Public Works and LADWP. But I would love, I know EIR documents are quite lengthy, but I would love a copy of the draft EIR for Scattergood that's addressing council's questions before that.
Yeah, it's not completed yet, but as soon as it is, I will make sure that we come through and provide that.
Yeah, that would be great. I don't need a formal briefing, just want a review.
Yeah, of course. I think that's going to be a popular document.
Yes, it will be an important and popular document, and I would love to take a good look before we get into it with council.
And one more item related to local that I am interested in, perhaps for a future update, is I had heard that the mayor was looking into a climate resiliency bond, and I'm not, I'm not that familiar with what the effort is there and whether there, I'm assuming there's some sort of collaboration with us or at least reliance on us, and I'm curious, I'm curious to learn more about that.
Okay. I'll put that down in my notes. I've heard a discussion about that, but I don't know how far along that is.
I don't know, Paul, I don't want to pre-put you have next, but one thing that does happen is whether it's the mayor's office or council offices, if they are working on a motion that might affect us, Paul's staff gets involved in helping to formulate something that's going to get what the council member, whoever is interested in at the same time, be something that's workable for us, that we all row in the same direction ideally. So there's a lot of, a lot of upfront involvement in those sort of things to make sure that we're well-coordinated.
Yeah, no, our staff, you know, we have liaisons directly with every single council, and we do ask that if there's going to be a motion, that we work together and so that we can provide exactly what they're looking for in the report packs. And I think that's a big part of the collaboration that we provide to them and they provide to us. So we understand a little more deeply what they're looking for, and we can provide it. And it's not going to take months and months. So if we work on the front end, it really helps us turn it around. So that's kind of an overview of, you know, on the federal, state, and local. And as we've talked about, this will be a regular update, whether it's quarterly or every two months, whatever it might be, but we'll come back. But I wanted to give a little bit of flavor of stuff that we've been working on, on the legislative side. And then a little bit of a preview of what's coming up. So we just, when I say we, members of our team, John Gregory and Alexandra Presenyo, joined with folks from both water and power. We had Terrence McCarthy, Louis Ting, Dennis Obiang, go up to what we call Capitol Day. And we met with many different state legislators in the state Capitol, dozens of meetings earlier this month. And it happens every year, before we do that, we actually hold planning sessions with both the power system and the water system. We kind of talk about what keeps you up at night, what are the things that you're concerned of, as well as what's working? What do we want to make sure that we keep? And so that before we go meet with our legislators, we're educated internally so that we can be, you know, advocating on their behalf. And then we meet with our legislators and provide, you know, education to them on the items that we're working on and learning, learn more about what's topical in this legislative session. So recently, we were up there, there was a great interest in what we're doing on electrification and how that works towards our affordability goals and the recently completed equity strategy. So that was a good topic on our, you know, how are we meeting those climate goals? On the power side, what's going to be a big topic this year is hydrogen. The federal government is in the midst of kind of establishing guidelines on defining what is clean or green hydrogen. State's looking, how do, how do they kind of, do they mirror that? Do they do their own? So that discussion, it's, I'm glad they're having it, it needs to happen. Other things that the Treasury's looking at, you know, how do we make guidelines?
And the carbon footprint, by the way, of a green technology may not, a green hydrogen may not, each green hydrogen, by the way, does not necessarily have the same carbon footprint, too.
Right. I mean, there's, is it from well to gate? Is it all of that, right? So that discussion is, I think that the policymakers are catching up a little bit now, where with, you know, the federal funding has spurred a lot of development, which is great. And now, now, you know, it needs to be fine-tuned on the policy side. So the state's looking at that. They recently announced a special committee on hydrogen, which is going to be chaired by Assemblyman Bennett, who, you know, Marty knows, because from a hydrogen trip you guys explored or trip you took. So that's great, because he's very, very interested in this. So the definition of hydrogen is going to be interesting. The IRS and the Treasury are currently setting guidelines on who would qualify for subsidies. This is important to us because clearly, you know, IPP is ready to go in 2025, and we want to make sure that we maximize for our ratepayers as much benefit. We're a first mover, we put a lot of money in upfront, and if we can get some money to subsidize that, to reduce the burden as we transition to our renewable energy future, this would be helpful for. to our renewable energy future, this would be helpful for all of our folks. So that's something that we're going to be monitoring pretty closely as well. The guidelines are right now being reviewed, comment letters have been submitted, and we'll see what they land on. And then the state has to see if they're going to align. Is that specifically just for the funding sources or are they going to use that same type of concept in general for how they view hydrogen here? So there's going to be a lot going on on the hydrogen side this year in the legislature. And we're going to be very, very closely monitoring that. And I think, you know, with our interests, we'll be involved as much as we can. On the water side, issues of water rights and water conservation continue to be at the forefront of the state legislature. Last year, there was a bill that was passed. It didn't do anything, but it did make findings that using water for personal irrigation was not consistent with the state climate goals. And so it didn't make any changes, but it maybe sets the table for further discussions about should there be future restrictions on personal irrigation. So that type of discussion may happen over this next legislative session.
How was personal irrigation defined?
It removed things like parks and large things like that, but it was really for residential.
Like residential turf, yeah.
Yeah. And so that kind of sets the table for further discussion. We're in the year two, the legislative session is two years, so there's bills that were introduced last year that come back, they can be what's called, got it amended. So they take an old bill and they just completely take everything out and put a brand new. So these topics may find their way, even if they weren't introduced last year. And the other thing was water conservation. There, a lot of discussion about how effective targets, the state does have targets for water conservation based on in-house use, you know, irrigation use, commercial use, you know, basically gallons per person, how much you want to use. And there's a lot of discussion about how effective those are, what's the cost benefit? I think that discussion's happening. We, again, I think we're a first mover in this. We've been doing water conservation for over a decade. So when we were in Sacramento, a lot of people were asking about our experiences with this. And we're more than happy to be, share our efforts and our experience and be part of that discussion to find the right path moving forward as this becomes, I think, a major topic this year and moving forward. You know, I think the last, the drought and, you know, last year that kind of saved us is kind of put it back at the forefront, that we can't push, kick the can and push this down the line. So those are some of the things that we're looking at on the state thing. I want to keep this a little bit brief to allow questions, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of our fantastic team and open to any feedback and suggestions for further presentations. As I said, you know, we have two sides of the coin. We have the legislative side, which I'm talking about today, but we also have the kind of day-to-day interactions with our council electeds, which is also really helpful. So moving forward, I'll try to present on both.
If I could add one thing, so one thing that Paul's group's done for years and years is have an annual legislative review, both of the water system and power system, to look at issues that each system has that they're concerned about, talk about legislation that's out there, engage people such as our federal lobbyists and state lobbyists to provide their input to everybody about what they see. So we do try to, you know, make sure we coordinate upfront with an initial message and a goal for the year of things we want to try to accomplish. And then, and then people from the systems that are engaged in each of these issues continue to be engaged during the course of the year. And so they may take trips to Sacramento with part of the legislative team. They may be, Paul's group will be reviewing legislation that comes out and commenting. They won't do it in a vacuum. They'll also be coordinating with their counterparts in the systems. So they try to take the lead and monitor everything that's going on from a legislative standpoint. At the same time, they don't operate in a vacuum. They operate in conjunction with the subject matter experts that are affected by this in each part of the department.
To that point, currently, we have a couple of members of my staff up in Washington, DC right now, helping Mr. Simon Zeddo as he's there for the American Public Power Association, which is a big deal out there. And so, yeah, we, our job is to kind of be the liaisons. We don't make decisions. We try to work with the departments, make the different groups, and make sure that we're helping fine tune the message and making the right connections so that the experts can advocate and that, you know, we become subject matter experts as well in the process so that we can further that and kind of translate that to our elected officials. So, yeah, it's a small group, but we have to be everywhere. And I think we do a pretty good job of that. But we'd like more people if that ever comes up.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate this being reintroduced as a topic for us to see.
Yeah, very helpful highlights.
Paul does a great job energizing people. And I know the AIA, American Institute of Architects, that's now inviting other organizations to participate, is forever thankful. And you should, I'll send you what their program is going to be in the next couple of months, but they're really active now, trying to be clear when issues come up, how to frame them, and then discuss them with the department.
Well, you know.
It's not just complaints all the time.
We appreciate that. We, you know, we deal with obviously federal, state, but locals really, you know, where the rubber hits the road. And we've actually, because of your leadership, instituted quarterly meetings with the AIA for the last year and a half, two years. And it was mostly to have a dialogue with their members.
Yes.
Not necessarily going to solve everything, but they need to understand how we operate our processes, and we have to understand the issues they're dealing with, the time constraints. And I think it's been extremely productive. We have another one coming up this March. We do meet every quarterly, and it's the managers from Power and Real Estate and Water and really talking about issues that come with architects and development community. And it's been extremely, I think, beneficial for both sides. And that's, I think, part of what we do is, you know, being effectively liaisons, is hearing the other side and figuring out how we can work together, you know, in a very complicated city system. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, looking at the agenda going forward here, I think we're on J now. Why don't we take just a short five-minute break before launching into the rest of, and when I say five minutes, I actually mean five minutes. So let's see that. Okay, thank you.
I'll let you get up.
We will resume momentarily. Would you please maintain silence for 20 seconds? Madam Vice President, may I please call roll?
Please.
Commissioner Katz?
President.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Present.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Present.
Three board members, a quorum is present.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is just reports by commissioners on committee activity. There was a personnel committee, Personnel Relations Committee meeting that was held, I'm sorry, that occurred since the last board meeting. Since George is the chair, we can wait to hear about that one at the next.
Sure.
Board meeting. So we'll put that one back on. Then we have filed items. Are there any comments on filed items? Just want to thank Catherine and team for the update here and the detail. Appreciate it. That's what we were looking for. Next, moving on towards the minutes, we're going to postpone the minutes approval until the next meeting. And next agenda item is introduction of motions for future consideration. Is there anything at this time? And then discussion with neighborhood councils is item N. Is there any community impact statements?
There are no community impact statements or formal positions filed by any of the neighborhood councils for any items on today's agenda.
Okay. Very good. So now we will be moving towards item one, three, four, and seven. Let's start with one. For each of these items, I am not looking for a presentation. It's really a couple of comments on each of them. Do you want to introduce yourselves just for?
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Michael Dandrea, Director of Human Resources.
And I'm Breonna Lindsey, Director of Water Distribution.
The reason why I wanted to call this item special was really to applaud the collective creative efforts in trying to get this one resolved. Nothing we do, nothing we do should take six years. And let alone something as, I think, important as equity related to salaries and job classes. And so I just wanted to bring you both up here to applaud that effort. And I know there were many others who were involved, John Cox, John Smith, Marty, and various other members of the team. And I just wanted to say that bringing it forth, I hope, is an example, one of that we can be creative to resolve some of these issues, but also that we really must explore further the way that we hire and resolve personnel-related issues. And so thank you both for getting this resolved and moving it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President. That's very gratifying to hear. It's been a long one, a very long one. In fact, I said to Breonia earlier, you know, we've been at this for two or three years. And he looked at me and he said, no, you've been at it for two or three years. And living it for a lot longer than that. So you're right, it's taken way too long.
Yeah, it was something that was on my heart when I took on the position as a director, recognizing that there's just inequity in the water construction manager side. And very thankful that we had the support of Aram and Marty, Mr. Anselmo Collins, and of course, Thomas and Deitra and Michael, of course, with Erica Hill. And it's just been a long time coming, and we're very, very grateful at this point. So thank you.
Thank you. And I look forward to seeing what other problems you'll solve.
We have a couple coming.
We have a few.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Also, item three.
May I have a motion to approve?
Oh, yes, please. Sorry, thank you. So moved.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Three eyes, motion adopted.
So I called this one special as well as, just my hesitation earlier on number five, was related to the storm drain purposes. And forgive me, as I'm not as close to this one or number five in terms of geography, but the reason why I'm calling this one special was the various commissioners, or several of the commissioners, including myself, have been getting briefings on stormwater capture. And it was in the middle of the storm. And it was in the middle of the stormwater capture briefing that I was having that I learned about these two items coming, number three and number five, coming to the, the board for approval. And I inquired with the stormwater capture team what part of the storm drain right-of-ways were related at all or even in consideration with our stormwater capture needs. And they were not actually aware of these two. And they actually said one of them in particular could have a cistern put into the storm, they knew the location of one of them and that, that a cistern could actually be put in service in one of the right-of-ways. And it's probably too late for anything to be done with either of these, but it is to really encourage any future storm drain-related right-of-ways that are being granted and sewer to be, work in coordination with the stormwater capture team to try to see what we can implement, even when they're small, these may be very cost-effective projects for us to increase our stormwater capture because our goals are aggressive with those as well.
Which, which item are you referring to right now?
Item three at this moment is in particular. There's nothing in particular about this one, just the general.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to make a motion for approval of item number three.
Second.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehrer? Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Three eyes, motion adopted.
Thank you, team. I, I know you, but please go ahead and introduce yourself.
Okay. Good morning. Adriana Rubacava, Director of Real Estate for the Department of Water and Power.
My name is Vincent Sabukavak. I'm the manager of substation, large customer stations.
Portino Reynoso, Property Manager, Real Estate.
And I know you have other members of your team in the back.
Yes, Simeon Morris back there, Real Estate Officer.
Yeah. So this one I'm calling special mostly because of its significance to the city and to, to highlight the efforts that I know you have all put forth in advancing this, this land swap. I know this is not an easy endeavor with multiple parcels, multiple constituents. The swaps are not necessarily like-for-like in size and, and location and oversight and governance. So this is a very, very complicated feat. And the MOU that is put forth is really the best that can be done in the, under the constraints of our city in terms of being able to come, have two parties come together and try to make some agreements. It is a great benefit to the community and I think will be a wonderful addition to the harbor area. And I applaud all the efforts for you that, that you all have taken. I know there's still a long road ahead and there will be, continue to be give and take on this. And I want to know, the public and you to know that you have the support of the board in ensuring that LEDDP assets are protected as best as possible in, in this transaction and transition. And I just want to thank you.
And we take your comment very serious. It is our job to protect the department and our assets, and we do. And we appreciate the support that we receive from power system and the City Attorney's Office. And I believe Commissioner Lehrer was there for the first opening for PERSO.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah. Look forward to the expansion beyond A. Any other comments or thoughts on this one?
Second yours, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and the last one, item seven.
May I have a motion?
Oh, right. I keep doing it. Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Commissioner Katz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lehrer?
Aye.
Vice President Neiman Brady?
Aye.
Three eyes, motion adopted.
And this last one, I'd actually like to defer to the next meeting, but I just wanted to explain why. I think there's a lot of very good intention and, and thought that is going into this LOI, LOA. But what it raised was just the need for an understanding of the overall LOA documentation and the financial implications of LOAs, as well as a better understanding of the process through which MOIs, I'm sorry, through, through which NOCs are advanced. And so I believe at the next board meeting, we'll have an update on that and we can then have a better context for this, this agenda item. And it also tells nicely with the fact that the budget will be gone since this had, these tend to have hiring implications, which I think should be incorporated for sure in the budget. So just wanted to give the explanation broadly and appreciate you being here, but I would like to see you again. All right. I think that's it. Correct?
The board shall recess into closed session for a conference with legal counsel for the items listed on agenda item P. The board shall publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention of every member present thereon in accordance with Section 54957.1 of the California Government Code.